It's like when the priest walks in church. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. Welcome tonight. And Ms. Smith, could you call the roll, please? Do I have all the names? I guess Alex Pine. Lucy Bisson?
Here.
Shanna Cox?
No.
She is not here. Roger Dupree?
Yeah.
Michael Marcot?
Present.
Amy Smith, present. Alexander Pine?
Here.
Mark Roy. And Lee seemed to be absent. Lee is absent. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you bet. Okay, and are there any adjustments to the agenda, Shelley?
No.
And is there any correspondence?
Yes, let's see here. Two thousand, I'm sorry, February 12th, 2024, emails from Shelley Norton, admin response to LCIP questions about the school system, email regarding Bartlett Street parking, forward of February 9th, 2024, email with photos of parking for Matthew Terrio, or from Matthew Terrio. February 12th, 2024, email from Dennis Terrio.
Thank you. Okay, in that case, we'll go to public hearings. And the first public hearing is the Planning Board sending a recommendation to the City Council for an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code for changes to Article 12, Section 2, Shoreland Area Standards. In order to make the city's shoreland ordinance, zoning ordinance, consistent with state statute, allowing property owners greater flexibility in altering the height of structures when in the flood zone. Okay, Craig?
So, we found a small conflict between the Shoreland Zone standards and the flood zone standards. The Shoreland Zone for, you know, structures for non-conforming structures as well, there's a maximum height requirement. For the, you know, for structures that undergo significant improvements, if they have not already been, they need to be elevated to above the base flood level. In those situations where they need to be elevated and there's an existing non-conforming structure, sometimes they butt heads, the, you know, they're required to be raised, but then they can't be raised past a certain point. So we've seen a few two-story structures that are functionally not been able to be improved because of that. There's language that the state adopted in 2021. We are essentially adopting that same language.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board? On, on the, okay. In that case, since this is a public meeting, I will open it up to the public and the public has the opportunity to speak for or against this, this recommendation. And if you would go to the podium, if you wish to speak, give your name and address and you will have three minutes to speak on any topic that is, but you will have only once to speak on any one topic. Okay? All right, so I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak for or against the Shoreland zoning?
Would.
Okay?
Hello, members of the board. My name is Jacob Arata. This is my wife, Jana. We recently moved to Lewiston. We live at Three Lune Drive on Noname Pond. And we'd like to speak in favor of this amendment as we think it's necessary to make the ordinance fair and reasonable since it'll more closely align with the state guidelines on this issue. For our particular circumstances, after the huge storm hit in December, our house was completely flooded underneath. There's, we were probably 20 feet or so from the, the house, from the water level of the pond. So it really came to our attention and highlighted the important, importance of us to elevate our house out of the flood zone. And we're concerned about the longevity of the existing house that we're living in as it's an older camp that was converted to a full-time house. So there's a lot of issues with that rot and the building shifting, et cetera. So, which makes us believe that our best course of action is to replace the existing structure and build something that we can stay in long-term. So this amendment to Article 12 would allow us to do this as the ordinance in its present state wouldn't allow us to have enough headspace or usable space on the second floor, while also getting us out of the floodplain if we were to rebuild. So I, I would say I have some personal connections to Lewiston. I went to school here in elementary school. I played basketball on Kennedy Park as a kid. So it's been great to be back in the area, moving back into Lewiston. And yeah, we just love becoming a part of the community again. And we'd really like to start a family here as well. So this amendment would help us have enough space to raise a family and to live here in Lewiston long-term. So overall, I think that passing this amendment would be fair and reasonable and would be not only beneficial for us, but anyone else in Lewiston that's, has the same circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this?
What are your names again?
Ms. Ayden. Okay, in that case, I will close it and bring it back to the board. And any further discussion from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Marcot?
I make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 12, Performance Standards.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dupree, okay. Any further discussion from the board of members? No? Okay, in that case, I'll call the roll. Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Marcot?
Yes.
Mr. Pine?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that should be all set. So that's going to go to the City Council?
On the 20th of February. And then again on March 19th.
Okay, so if you wish to speak again for it, if you want to go to the City Council meetings and, and say your piece, you can do that too. Okay? Great. Okay. The Masjidul Salam Mosque has submitted a development review application to expand the existing parking lot and increase the occupancy of their existing building located at 240 Bartlett Street. The item has been continued from January 8th and 22nd meetings. Craig?
So I would direct you to the memo dated February 8th, 2024. There was the initial one. We sort of have a little bit more information, so we, there's an updated memo. And actually, on that note, the first page is sort of information from the old memo. I would direct you to site visits, starting on page 2. So in order to get more information requested previously, Shelley and I made two visits to, to the property on January 19th and on January 26th. We were there between 12:00 and 1:30. On January 19th, we, right, we were there from 12:00 PM to 1:30, counted approximately 165 people entering the building between that time. And at about 1:30 PM, occupancy began to drop off rapidly. During that same time period, we counted 75 vehicles total for the property. Not all on the property. Some were at McGraw Park, some were on the street. But in total, we attributed 75 vehicles to the, to the use. Let's see. Staff trips, on that same day, January 19th, staff trips to the Coliseum parking lot showed no use by the mosque attendees. We weren't able to, you know, we, we didn't see any parking being used for, by the Coliseum. On January 26th, it was observed that a sign had been erected limiting onsite parking to 25 cars and that the mosque had someone directing people where to park and turned away people when their limit of 25 was reached. Between 12:00 and 1:30 PM, there were approximately 114 people who entered the building. And at about 1:45 PM, then occupancy dropped off again. For vehicles, staff counted the total amount of onsite parking. That day was at 25. And there were additionally vehicles, 34 vehicles were observed in the McGraw Park parking area, which we attributed to the mosque. There were four vehicles we saw that were illegally parked or double parked. And we also observed a Leonard heavy towing vehicle in the park as well. It took up several spaces. The total vehicle count we attributed to the mosque was 62 for that day. And again, staff trips to the Coliseum parking lots showed no use by, by attendees. Moving to staff recommendation. If there is any occupancy increase to be considered, staff suggests using these figures from the past two Friday visits to determine peak usage. We've estimated a parking ratio of approximately one space for every two occupants by counting up the total 279 occupants, dividing that by the total 137 vehicles over that two-week span. The previous Planning Board approval granted a maximum occupancy of 94 with the existing approved 25 space parking area. This existing occupancy and parking ratio is not subject to amendment, but staff are recommending that any new occupancy be reviewed using the two people per parking space calculation. The new development review application for the property will add 23 parking spaces for a total of 48 spaces. And using the above ratio, these 23 spaces could permit an additional 46 occupants at the property for a total of 140 occupants. Go to staff recommendation. City staff has no additional comments at this time. We recommend that if the board approves the proposed project, they include the following conditions. There are three conditions. That prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant provides proof of financial capacity for the cost of the project. That prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide a stamp statement indicating all stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. And three, prior to the expansion of occupancy to the men's and women's side of the building, a building permit will be required and a certificate of occupancy. And you'll see there are two actions listed.
I also just want to jump in and say that what we're suggesting in this memo of a potential occupancy of 140 people is different than what the mosque has applied for and what the plans show. So if, if the board does want to grant increased occupancy and wants to grant less than what the mosque has asked for, then we would need to have revised plans. So that would probably be an additional condition of approval. So depending upon where the board chooses to go this evening, if you make a decision tonight, there might be additional conditions that should be discussed before you take action.
Thank you. Anybody, excuse me, any members of the board have any questions for staff? Mr. Dupree?
Shelley, 94 people were, the occupancy was back when the immigrants first started coming into Lewiston. Since then, I think there's been a tremendous explosion as far as people, you know, from that community. And I don't think that by granting this type of occupancy is going to help anything. You've already had 116 people at one time and another 112 people, so forth. What authority does the city have or the, what recourse does the city have as far as regulating the amount of occupancy in the building of this site?
Yeah, so there's a couple ways that occupancy is regulated. Certainly, there's fire regulations. In this case, this building could have up to 300 people from a fire code standpoint. What's really before the board this evening is our parking regulations, which requires onsite parking for uses in certain districts in the city, including where this is located. So because our parking code, you know, there's some flexibility within it. So if you, when you looked at the January memo, you would have seen the language regarding area, like spaces for assembly, for religious institutions. It's all one category. There's a number of uses listed as one category that then have a correlation of essentially four people per car. But it depends on how the facility is set up, whether it's, you know, one car per every four fixed seats or so forth. There is though also a statement in that that the Planning Board has the ability to determine for uses that are not listed or for listed uses, like this would be a religious institution, that parking demand is greater or lesser than what the ordinance specifies. And so, you know, in 2012, when the Planning Board made the decision to approve a 94-person occupancy with 25 cars, they were using closer to that one car for four people formula. What we have done recently as staff because we didn't have a grasp on, and neither did the mosque, what their current occupancy and how that related to the vehicles onsite was. We, we knew that there seems to be an increase of use, but we didn't have actual numbers. So that's what we have come back with is, at least for this time of year. I mean, we, you know, a couple Fridays isn't necessarily a guarantee that that's consistent, but we saw a fairly consistent average of, of two people per car when you average out the number of people and the number of cars. So that's what we're suggesting could be a good number going forward. We've been advised that that decision in 2012 by the board to allow 94 persons for 25 parking spaces is not up for reapproval or, or change. So it's really going forward as the city looks at this site and as the Planning Board looks at the parking onsite and how it meets the Zoning and Land Use Code requirements. You would be looking for a way forward for any potential increase. What kind of a ratio would you use for parking? So that's what we're proposing at this time. Now, what I have told the applicant is, you know, so, well, you're, you might be aware. So we're, they've had a violation at the site, you know, kind of ongoing, which is part of what they're trying to rectify by having them increase the parking lot and come before you for this determination. But really, what needs to happen is for the mosque to start to limit their occupancy based on what the approved amount is. So that's one of the things in the section on conditions of approval where I've stated some other additional conditions that you might consider. And one of them is requiring the mosque to provide information on how they're going to manage that themselves so that whether 94 is still the occupancy number, whether it's 140, whether it's some other number, that there is a method that they're working towards for being in compliance. So, long-winded answer. I hope that clarified it.
It clarifies it to a point, but what I'm concerned about is safety issue with double parking on Bartlett Street. Now, I contacted Kevin Gardney in the Public Works Department in regards to this and he explained to me that the road on that situation is 35 feet wide. Now, the average vehicle is six and a half feet to seven feet wide, figuring a foot parked from the curb and opening and closing a door is another two feet. So you're talking nine feet for a vehicle. So that's 18 feet on each side. Now, an emergency vehicle such as a fire truck or a dump truck or a snowplow or that situation coming up Bartlett Street is going to be approximately 12 to 14 feet wide. So he's going to be coming up the center of the street. You have traffic coming down Bartlett Street or going up Bartlett Street, depending on which way the service vehicle is going. There's no room for any traffic to pass. It becomes a safety issue. And I think by granting additional parking, you're increasing the volume of automobiles being parked all which ways on that street. Based on the photographs that we've seen, you know, they're double parked, triple parked, and quadruple parked everywhere. Now, in Mr. Leonard's situation with his towing situation on Bartlett Street, they're parking in his driveway. They're parking at the Italian Bakery and every other place, you know, that they can stick a vehicle, whether it's right side, wrong side, whatnot. So adding additional vehicles is just compounding the issue. So I think we have to look at your, I think you explained in one of your letters that it's a zoning issue. And I think, you know, if this situation is to be brought forward, we have to look at the zoning in that area, whether or not, you know, a mosque is the right place in that neighborhood or it should be moved elsewhere.
If I could just respond, so as far as on-street parking goes, the, there are existing on-street parking spaces, which are illegal spaces. And the city has made a determination, you know, and that's certainly not the planning department's, that there is enough space for having those on-street parking spaces. You know, if there are concerns about safety, those can be taken up with Public Works and Police. But really, before you tonight isn't the on-street parking because that's not something you have control over. That's really determined by other departments within the city. And what was the second question you'd had about? Oh, zoning. So as far as the use there, there isn't a question as to whether the mosque is an allowed use. That's, that's really not a discussion for this evening. It, I honestly don't know if it still is, but it's grandfathered regardless. So if they could establish a new one today, that might be the case. I'd have to look in the ordinance. But regardless, it exists. And so it's not a question of whether it can exist there. It's a question of how it meets the required parking standards. So what would be the appropriate occupancy of the space?
But I think that's all in correlation to the amount of people going in. You know, and if you have walking traffic, it's a different situation. But in this case here, you have people driving from in-city as well as out of the city, you know, to that mosque. So by increasing the volume of parking in one area, you're compounding issues. And I think we have to look at the neighborhood and the type of neighborhood that's there and be considerate of them.
Yes, no?
Okay. Yes, Alex?
So, sort of has me thinking. Has, have we done, as a, this is a history question. Have we done a review of parking requirements recently? Just in general, not just for religious institutions?
We have not. We looked at the downtown districts recently. So we did eliminate some parking standards for commercial uses. But that was only for, I believe it was Riverfront, Downtown Residential, Sontreville. There might have been one other downtown district. But this site is located in the Highway Business District.
Got it, got it. I wonder if it would be worthwhile to consider this for, you know, next time we want to workshop things, thinking about, you know, four people per car. I think that's a very sort of, you know, traditional idea of people going to a house of worship on one day and it's a family. And I would imagine that demographics have changed enough where maybe there's only one person in that car, maybe two people. And certainly revisiting those standards and maybe just comprehensively, because I'm assuming a lot of them were, you know, updated about the same time, might be worthwhile. If, if there's a way that we could just sort of, you know, put a pin in that and have it on, put it on the list. I know we have a big list.
Yeah, yeah, it is on the list for staff. And it's an interesting question because a lot of what we've done in the downtown is reduce the parking standards. And so kind of, you know, that's the question as to whether we would want to go in other parts of the city and start increasing the parking more or whether you want to do it in a case-by-case basis like this where you want to use the flexibility that the Planning Board has to make a determination that in a certain case, like you've done with warehouses, to determine that less parking is needed based on how many employees are going to be there.
Yeah.
So that type of situation where it gives you the flexibility.
And then, just to, just to be clear, just so we sort of pick out the numbers here. You're recommending or suggesting two people per vehicle, sort of a, seems like a good average based on the two days averaged out, which would leave total occupancy at 140. On, and it, from what I'm reading here, on both days, it either like just hit or exceeded that number in terms of number of people in the site?
The 140, you mean?
Yeah.
It kind of almost if you average the two. So it was 165 the first Friday and then the next Friday, which had, there was a little bit of snow that day. So that might have impacted it.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
114.
It was in the teens. What was it?
114.
114.
On your.
Got it. So sort of bookending that number. And I guess maybe to just put a finer point on it, what I'm hearing from you, Roger, around sort of a concern of, you know, if we allow for additional capacity on paper at this, at this facility, that that's going to just sort of be a slippery slope and lead to even additional non-compliance over what's already happening.
That's correct.
And, okay. So just wanted, wanted to make that clear, that that, that's the concern. I'm, I'm, you know, we've heard this a couple of times at, at various meetings. I think that is sort of an overarching concern. So I just wanted to make sure that we name that on the record.
Amy?
So, again, to the numbers. Previously, it was occupancy of 94, parking space 25. The actuals that you counted was an average of about 140. So you're saying 70 parking spaces. Is that right? Based on what you observed and the two people per car, like it's 140, so it's 70 parking spaces?
I mean, that's probably what you would need for the 140 if you were going to build it today and use that ratio of one car to two people. Given that the determination in 2012 was to allow 94 persons with 25 cars, that sort of is, already exists and there isn't really an opportunity to change that. You can certainly take that into consideration in your determination as to whether to allow greater occupancy and how much. But we can't really change that approval.
Right, but the, I'm just trying to get at sort of the delta, right? So the difference between 94 and 140 is 46. Check my math?
Yes.
Meaning that they would need an additional half of that, 23 spots, right now? So that would, right now?
And that's why we've suggested 140 because there's 25 approved parking spaces. Their design shows an additional 23 spaces. So what we've said is for those additional 23 spaces, if you use, you know, one car per two people ratio, that would be an additional 46 people. So that's how we get to the 140 people.
Okay, and then how many, with the improvements and the expansion of the facility, how many additional people?
No, that's it, 140.
That's, that's what we're suggesting. The, you know, the original application materials suggested a greater number of occupancy than that, given that parking lot size. But we're recommending that it would be this lower number.
Okay, so we're saying we think that the true number moving forward is about 140 and therefore we need 70 spaces?
No.
I think, maybe.
Oh, it's 25 plus, plus 23, which is 48.
Okay, so basically.
It's how many they can fit onsite, really. And so that maxes out their land, you know, with safe, you know, move, moving across the site and, you know, that sort of thing. So really then, the question is for that number of parking spaces, what would be the appropriate occupancy?
So just to make it clear, you started, because we can't change the original occupancy and parking, so 94 spaces, or 94 folks, 25 spaces. And then adding the additional 24 spaces, or 23 spaces, is at the two people per car ratio. And so adding that number to the previous number is how we get at the 140.
Right. 94 plus 46, 140. Right, 94 plus 46, 140. Got it.
Okay.
And it's 48 spaces.
Just wanted to make sure I was understanding the math.
Yeah, okay. So the plans bring it up to how many spaces?
48.
Yes.
Numbers aside, I think it's, I just want to go on record saying it's really hard when you own a property and there's a neighbor that is causing issues for your property, which is what I'm hearing in these conversations. And so I just want to acknowledge that that's a very frustrating position to be in, you know, zoning laws aside. And I guess my question would be, two questions. The first is, is the walkway from the Coliseum to the mosque kept free of snow regularly?
It was when I was there a couple of weeks ago. I don't know how, you know, quickly it gets plowed, but I've parked at the Coliseum, walked to the mosque, and it's a pretty short walk.
So I guess my, my question is to, to the folks who, you know, who are applying. I'm just curious why the Coliseum's not being used, or why you're not sort of encouraging people to use that. Because the McGraw Park is also not your property. And I don't know if that there's a special deal with the city that you get to, you know, use the whole thing on Fridays. I, I don't understand. I don't know how that deal works. But I just would love to hear from the members of the mosque as to why the Coliseum's not getting used. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for staff? We're still talking staff, okay?
Okay, in this case, I will open it up to the public. Again, you have, if you wish to speak for or against this project, would you please go to the podium, give your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. And you can only speak once on this issue.
Lucy, should we have the applicant speak first?
Okay, all right, well, in that case, yes, Mr. Hamilton, why don't you come up and, and give us?
I'm threatened somebody would like to do this to music.
Oh, please.
You're right. I, I.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I'm Bill Hamilton. I'm an architect. I think it's fair, it's, it's, and this is not to put any special honors on me, but I've been involved in parking, highway research, and everything else for 54 years. That has nothing, I never thought it would apply to this. But, but it's a very good example of how do you do it? How do you help anything that comes into any location meet the needs of the location that it's in? And I have no, no regrets or no concerns that anybody has concerns. We should have concerns. We should work this out. We have a, I have a client that this is certainly not something that they were used to. And so I've put a lot of work into the thoughts of this, and I've talked a lot to them. And right now, I'm going to explain what I'm thinking.
Okay.
The parking, that we, we just tried to figure out how much organized parking could go on that site that would deliver and ultimately deliver what we're talking about, which is 140 people, the two people per car. We didn't think about the two people car at the time, but it works out. I also feel, and I'm going to recommend, I would talk, I've mentioned this recently, that this, this parking and the order of this parking is the responsibility of the mosque and how, and how people use it. I, I have not been there, even though I've been working on this off and on for three years, I have not been there enough Sundays, or Saturdays, or Fridays, or anything else to be sure of how it works. But I think it would work really well, certainly significantly better than it does now, if we limit it to two parking, two people per space. The building has nothing to do with the number of people that use this mosque. It was a bus repair building at one time. So now, it's what would the site support to make it possible for them to feel comfortable that they know what needs to be done? This puts them, this puts the mosque in the position, and this is what I'm thinking, and this is the real simplicity of the issue, of being responsible for monitoring how that people use the parking. And, and it should be their responsibility. And, and I don't think it should be, I don't think, I think there's no reason why it couldn't be. It may take some training, it may take some experience, it may take some patience on some parts. And I know people have been through a lot of work of developing understanding and concerns, and that's fine. But I think we can do it. And so I would like to recommend for them that we do limit it to two people per car, that that set the number of people that can use that building. And we'll then work the building out, which we've already done. We'll work the building out and find a way to convert, put them in the responsible position of saying, how many people can come in this building? And if they're comfortable with that responsibility, then I think we probably have an opportunity to bring this together. And if we have to do some more thinking, and anybody wants to do more thinking, I'm more than willing, delighted to try, to support and to listen to anybody else's suggestions. And your point, for instance, how wide cars are on the street and trucks. That applies to every street in this town.
Oh, yeah.
But, but that's, that gets by that issue. That, that just says, okay.
Well, I'd just like to add a situation, you know, and this happened this past Friday. I have a good friend of mine that buys his beans at Italian Bakery, and I went down with him this past week. Now, to get into the bakery, your normal parking space width is approximately 15 feet.
Mm-hmm.
All right? Now, there were cars parked on both ends of that parking lot, and the width of that was only nine feet and 11 inches.
Yeah.
All right, now, a car going in and a car coming out, can't see what's coming up and down that, that street. So now you have another safety issue.
No, I understand. How many, there are lots of places in this town, and one of the best is right at Roy's Hamburg Place, where you go around that. Getting around that without finding yourself in the back of somebody else's car or truck is, is fascinating. So no, no, I have no problem. And I think that should be separate. I think that, I think the mosque has, should not be related to that park. They should not put themselves in the position of be, of finding that being an issue.
That's true, but the thing is, it still relates to automobiles and where they're parked. I mean, if it was a walking congregation, I have no issues with that whatsoever. But where you have adding an additional, basically 100 cars, you know, where are you going to park them? I mean, you're already saturated now.
Ultimately, ultimately, when this site is used, all the parking should be on that site, all of it.
Granted, but you're not going to put 100 vehicles on that spot.
We don't need 100 vehicles.
Well, if you're doing, you know, two people per vehicle and you want 140 people.
It's 70 vehicles, and that's what's there.
It's not, but, yes, Mr., yes, Ms., Mr. Marklot, you had your hand up. No, I'll, I'll get you next.
I don't know if the, the timing is right here, but took a little bit of offense at making reference to Roy's. We're talking about this project right now. And planning is about safety.
Absolutely.
And our fire service uses that lane to get downtown when it's needed. And if they're coming around that hairpin turn by Mayotte's and everything else that's there, it is about safety.
It is.
Not, I don't want to segue this to the fire marshals, but later I'll bring up the fire marshal issue.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Roy?
So I'm not, I'm not seeing the 70 spaces. I'm only seeing 51 or 48.
It's 48.
No.
Including the two.
No, all of them.
Handicap, yes.
Handicap.
That's what it is.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing 70 spaces.
How many spaces do we have on there?
Let me just look at that.
We can count them again. I thought I counted them again recently.
There's 18 down here. There's five up there. That's 23. Another 26. That's 51, plus the two handies.
Plus 40.
Yeah, I think it's 48. And then the parking need was 55 or 56, so for your original plan, based on the four people per car.
Right.
So it's based on those parking spaces, the two part, two cars, two people per car?
Right, so that's less than 140.
Well, it, it needs to be exactly that number. I was trying to count it again this evening. That's what it needs to be. And I, I would support that.
Alex?
So just to be clear, you're, you're saying that maybe the right thing to do here is modify the proposal? So not, not moving forward with what was originally proposed, but modifying the proposal to look at having the occupancy match having
The parking.
The assumption of two people per car.
Per space, yes.
And so if we were to move forward with that, what that would look like, right now, the existing occupancy is 94 people, and there's 25 spaces. And, and that, that's what we've approved, and we cannot change that. And what we would be doing by passing an additional, you know, by granting this, you know, this new theoretical proposal, is an additional 23 spaces to bring it up to 48.
Yeah.
And I sort of did quick math, and it's probably not 100% right, but it's probably close enough. If we, if we assume that we're adding, or we're going to have two people per car on average, including the existing spaces, that gets us to 96 people. And so the.
Has to be more than 96? You started with 94.
Hmm, no, 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 no. But if, if we were assuming that all of the cars on the lot, including the pre-existing.
48 spaces.
All 48 spaces. If we assumed that those had two people per car.
Yeah.
Even though the original, the original granting was not that, that would get us to 96 people. And so the new proposal would be that we increase the capacity of the building by two people, and we increase the parking by 23 spaces. I think I, I think I got that all right, based on sort of what you're saying right here.
If it was to music, it'd be clearer.
Yeah, so, but, am I, I don't think I'm, I'm getting my point across super clear here.
No, I mean, I think you're right. When people are talking about 70 spaces and 140 cars, what you're actually talking about is there's going to be 48 spaces on-site, which would be 96 people. So what you just mentioned, that would be what that looked like if the prior approval of 94 people for 25 cars was not kind of in the equation.
Yeah, and so, and from what I was understanding, what you just said was, that's, that's kind of where your mind's at right now, that we should assume two people per car across the board.
I think that's the only way to get through this thing, so that everybody understands and can see the, the components of this in an equal, in a uniform way.
So really, the idea is that, you know, when we look at the actual use now, the average mosque attendee is bringing one other person with them in the car. And so that, that's, that was what we observed. And even though we have this prior approval that for 25 spaces, assuming four people in each car, we really have to sort of reframe it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't change.
And, and, you know, we can't change it. So what I was saying of the new proposal, if we were to move forward with this and not move forward with the original proposal, would be a increase of two people for capacity and an increase of 23 parking spaces, because we cannot change the old one, the old approval, right? We can only just add to it, right, Shelley, or am I getting this wrong?
Yeah, you would just be adding occupancy and approving the new parking lot.
Yeah, so we're just adding two people and adding 23 spaces, which then makes the total site parking usage at two people per car fit a building capacity of 96.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
And, yes, Amy?
Okay, so the reality is, you probably need 70 parking spaces. And you can only have 52, I mean, or whatever this is, 50, 55, 48, right?
Wait, wait a minute, let me just ask a question. Because I'm not going to try to count these spaces here while I'm standing here, because I'll, I'll mess it up. But the total spaces that are, that are going to be built on that site, hopefully we can use the plan that's there, and whatever number that is, we multiply it by two. That would be, that would be, I think, the easiest way to all be on the same page.
Right, so, so I, I understand that, but there, there's zoning and what we're looking at for approving here tonight. And then there's a reality of the situation, which is, there will never be enough spots on this site for the attendees. And I'm sure that the members of the mosque don't want to turn people away from their religious observance, right? So, but that's just the reality, and that's totally fine. So that's why I asked the question, which is, why, how, or why is the Coliseum not being used for parking? Because I understand that you have permission, some sort of a deal with them. And if the walkway is regularly cleared by the City of Lewiston, and if there's a difference between where the walkway takes you and the entrance to the new parking lot, then the mosque would clear that. I'm just asking the question, why aren't people using the Coliseum parking lot?
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Nadifa. To answer your question, we have encouraged visitors to use that space through our internal communication channel that we have. And we have, when community members see filled, they just turn, go back. Normally, the prayer starts at 12:30, the lecture starts at 12:30. So around, sometimes people drive in 25 minutes before, three minutes before. And when they see the space is full, and we encourage them to go park by the Coliseum, since we have an agreement with them, people assume that it might be too late for them to attend the lectures, then they leave. But on our end, we always have encouraged visitors to use that space since it has been okayed by the Coliseum. So we are encouraging on our end to do what we can, and people have been rather not parked there and instead stay home. It is not just 100, the average amount of visitors who have been coming to the mosque, but it is way more than that. And we have been telling people either to stay home, or fast come, fast serve, or you park somewhere else.
See, that, that's, that's where I have a problem.
Okay.
They park somewhere else. Instead of parking at the Coliseum, they park in McGraw Park, they park in Mayotte's parking lot, they park in, in Mr. Terrio's property across the street. And that is my, that is my problem with, with the mosque being there. And, and, and they're, they're not being concerned about the neighbors' properties. They're just parking anywhere. I mean, we have pictures of people parking in McGraw Park, and they're, they're parked, there are people parked on the sides, and then there are people parked right in front of them, filling out the, the whole place. So let, let's say there's a soccer game going on come, come spring, summer, or other activities that other people can't use them because your people are, are using all of the spaces. Instead of using, you have an agreement with the Coliseum, and instead of parking there, they're just taking the closest parking space. And I understand that, because I'm lazy as heck, as I, I don't want to walk any further, then I have to. But you're, you need to impress upon your congregates, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know, you know.
Worshipers.
Worshipers, okay. You need to impress upon your worshippers that they need to either park there. They, they can't hog all of the parking spaces in everybody else's businesses. And that's, that I have a problem with.
To clarify, we have specifically told our worshippers on our internal communication that one, they cannot park on, across the Italian Bakery. Two, they cannot park by the, the new playground that has been, the new soccer field. And three, most definitely, they cannot park right across from our neighbor. So we have that advised to them. The other issue that have not been addressed is that there are truck drivers who are coming to the town, there are also outside of state people who are coming to the area, and they just Google it, closest mosque near me, when it's around the prayer time. So those individuals, we do not know, those people we don't know. On the incident that happened on February ninth, when I got those pictures and the email that was forwarded to me from the, from city officials, I followed up, and it turns out to be people who are not familiar with the area. And in that case, we were able to inform them that this isn't the place. We are full, come back around one-thirty or one-forty-five to do regular prayer during time, other than the Friday lecture, since they missed it, and it is, we reached out the maximums. So that is one of the issues that we have tried to solve on our end, and that is something that I have acknowledged and reached out to our neighbor, apologizing to him that this has happened, and we understand, and we validate your concerns. We are doing everything we can on our end. Sometimes it might be very hard when we don't know who we're dealing with, even though it is out of the, out of our sight.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Alex?
I noticed in the city's report that they said that you had someone monitoring your lot and directing people. Would it be possible for you to have other volunteers, other folks from the mosque, stand at, you know, both maybe the parking lot at the park, and sort of just like generally, you know, greeting people as they enter the door and saying, hey, if you didn't park in this lot, or you didn't park over in the coliseum, you need to move your car to the coliseum? And maybe bringing forth a plan that sort of shows how you're gonna do that could really help with the situation with the neighbors, because it sounds like, on your end, you know, you're really trying to inform your worshippers. They're getting the message, they turn around, they go home, but it's folks who are not familiar with your mosque, who are coming from out of town, they don't know, they're just sort of doing whatever they want to do. And it seems like maybe there is a way that you could try to reach those people as they show up, especially because it sounds like the coliseum is fairly close and pretty easy to direct them to. And I wonder, I don't know how, maybe this is a question for staff, what our rules are around temporary signage? So like, if you were able to place signs at, you know, on the way to the road to the coliseum that says mosque parking this way, telling worshippers if the lot is full, follow these signs to go to the coliseum, rather than parking next door.
We do have up to, we have made a huge improvement on increasing the amount of volunteers who are able to direct people where to park, to inform people when we meet the limit. I do agree, and saw the message sent from the staff visits to you guys and also to me. But for, after that, on February second and February ninth, we were able to make a huge difference is to be able to have more volunteers on site, having individuals go into the coliseum. When we tell people to go to the coliseum, then we have volunteers who are there, present, raising hands and see if they have been directed to park here. So we are doing the best we can to make sure that we are serving and satisfying as much as we can our neighbors to validate their concerns, and also to come up some changes to make sure that we meet the requirement too on our end.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, at this time, I will open it up to the public. If you wish to speak for or against, go to the podium and give your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Anyone wish to speak for or against? Go to the podium, give us your name, and, yes, please.
Hi, Elizabeth Eames. I guess I only have one thing to say, and I guess I'll use all my time on that, which is, we're talking about forty-five minutes a week here, according to the staff. The maximum occupancy is twelve-forty-five to one-thirty on a Friday, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Shukri Abdiraman. I am for this proposal. Yeah, so just to, I've been taking notes in terms of like the questions that were asked. And one of the questions was, why are people not using the coliseum parking space? And I feel like I have the answer for that. That could just simply mean, we have a lot of people in our community who might be disabled. They cannot walk from the coliseum to the mosque. That is simply not, that's not feasible for people. And also, the coliseum is near the mosque, but at the same time, we're trying to make sure that we're creating space at the mosque, so people, we create less barriers for people to actually get there. By having the mosque parking lot be further and further away from the mosque, that's not really serving the need of the people, and there's no point of people going to the mosque if the parking is far away. And another thing I would like to talk about is a question about the occupancy. There's twenty-five parking spaces currently, and there's ninety-five people who currently, ninety-four or ninety-five people who attend the mosque. And most of these things, most of the concerns, I've listened to everyone talk, and I feel like the concerns are coming from, you know, neighbors having issues with the amount of people that are going into the mosque. First of all, the mosque is a religious site for Muslim people in the community of Lewiston, Maine. These people have been here since two thousand, early two thousands. That mosque has been there since two thousand twelve. There has been no issues. And regards to the safety concern of like whether it's safe for people to actually, like the roads, the concern is about the streets, the parking, and the safety, right? Has there been any incidents with the fire marshals that they've had with the parking spaces so far? Have they had any issues with the mosque in terms of people not being able to get there for like emergency reasons? That's for Mr. Roger Derby. And then also, another thing is like, I would like to know what has happened in the past for, to, you know, raise these concerns of like safety in terms of like people not being able to actually, like, you know, people not feeling safe in terms of like the parking space. The mosque also has neighbors, right? One of the neighbors is the Italian Bakery. The Italian Bakery has never complained about the mosque, and no one even parks at the Italian Bakery. And another place is the towing company that's across from the mosque. No one has ever parked in that towing company's space. So I'm not sure where the concern is coming from in terms of their parking lot being used. That's not accurate at all. And then also, the other neighbors, we haven't heard complaints about the other neighbors in terms of them having issues with people parking there. So I want to know, I would like to know these neighbors to like come forward. I've heard one neighbor talk about the parking issue. I would like to hear the other neighbors talk about the parking issue they might have with the mosque.
Okay, your time is over. Three minutes are up.
Thank you.
For the record, could you spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is S.H.U.K.R.I. And also, I will just end this with one last few, couple few words. Thank you very much. I feel like this is a bigger concern of, I will just call it out, racism. This is not an issue about whether we're actually like, you know, it's about the occupancy. There's also a lot of churches in the space. No one ever talks about, oh, monitor the churches as much as they monitor the mosque. So I would like to get into more of why
Thank you.
this is only specified for the mosque. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Abdikadir Nagey, A.B.D.I.K.A.D.I.R., N.E.G.E.Y.E. I'm resident of Lewiston. I'm here to speak about, as a member of the Masjid Islam mosque. I think our first public comment mentioned that this is being used only one and a half or two the max for every week. So I think that's one thing that we need to understand. It's not like everyday thing, it's just a one day. And also, not all, like, no year around, mostly it's the winter season, we note when weather is very good, everyone can walk away anywhere. That exercise is good for everyone. So during the summer and spring or fall, it's not that an issue for people to walk from either the residence or from coliseum area. I think the coliseum area is something that recently, because we had the concern of Mr. Terrio is a valid thing, though we want to respect and acknowledge that. So it's something that the mosque is trying to come with a solution, rather than focusing on the problem. So coliseum was not there in the beginning, when the issue was raised. That's how we started connecting with the neighbors, finding alternatives to address the issue. So people need to have some time to even get to know the coliseum area, or maybe adoption, need to be redirected. So we already addressed like volunteers, that we talked about, people are being assigned to direct people, either to the coliseum, either, if there are people parking on the road, then they're being told, even if they are in the mosque, if they parked, double parked, or wrongly parked, they're being called to take their car or moved. So I think the mosque has already addressed this issue, whether they've been using for double parked or wrongly parked, to make sure that we are not allowing anyone to be impacted by our members who are coming to the mosque. Also, I think we don't want to cause any issue to the businesses or neighbors. So I think today, unlikely, as we, we're coming from a community where we tend to solve issues more like mediation, restorative way. I think we are glad to, or happily to meet with Mr. Terrio to address any concern. I think it wouldn't even be this big issue if Mr. Terrio at least come to us or say, okay, this is the issue, neighbors, please fix it. We happy to do that. And we would love to have him come to our mosque on Fridays, have some tea, some bousa with us, so at least even talk about the issues.
Your time is up.
Oh.
Sorry.
Fast.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Mahidin Lebar. I run a small nonprofit organization in downtown Lewiston, right out of two-twenty-two Pine Street. I like, there's two big pieces that we are trying to bring. Like, back home in Africa, mosque has never been asked any questions. To where we are right now, the mosque has to follow the rules of the city audiences. And I'm not here arguing that. The rules are there for a reason. And the mosque and the community are trying to follow the rules, but the time is the problem. So I personally run a nonprofit organization, and I'm trying to volunteer, because I'm seeing the mosque has issues communicating to the congregations. Because the question is, why are people not using the coliseum parking? And my feeling is that people are not familiar with this kind of weather, and they need help. Like, somebody has to be there directing, and somebody has to be there making sure that people put their cars in the right place. Me personally, what I'm trying to do right now is offer my help, my volunteer services for the two hours that the mosque is in session, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty, one hour, to bring my fifteen-passenger van to the coliseum parking. Anybody who park there, bring them as a shuttle to the mosque and bring them back to their parking space. Because what we are trying to do here is to get a solution to the problem that's at hand. It's not pointing fingers at each other. There is a problem, and I can see there is a problem. And all we need to do is come up with a solution. So if we have another two people who can put their time there, either volunteering, either volunteering, pointing people to the coliseum, or shadowing people back to the mosque and back to the coliseum, we are trying to get help. And I'm sorry it's this way, but we will get the solution to the problem.
Thank you very much.
Sir, could you spell your name for the record?
M.U.H.I.D.I.N.
Thank you.
Yes, David.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sahal, S.A.H.A.L. I've been in Lewiston for the last eighteen years, and most of my kids grew up here. So I have been one of the mosque volunteers since this issue has begun. So since the last three Fridays, two Fridays, I have been helping with redirecting, you know, cars when the max of twenty-five cars been reached, to park elsewhere, all the way to the coliseum park. So we have been asking one of our volunteers to be at the coliseum park, so that they stay there for the whole session. That means they miss the Friday prayer, they just pray during time, come one-thirty, and then they pray on their own without the congregation. So we have like up to five, six volunteers every Fridays that be there from twelve until two. Just volunteering, directing like traffics, and like worshippers coming to the mosque. And so far, I haven't seen any accidents happening, any safety issues happening in that area. In fact, that's like the peaceful, mosque is a peaceful place, like people come there to have some self-care, worship, you know, forgive, pray. We're just there to ask God to help us. We even pray for our neighbors, you know, like everybody in Lewiston. That means like we are like, we're here, we don't want to cause problems, we live here. My kids are growing here. They'll be here forever. I'll be here forever. I'm Lewistonian, I'm proud to be a Lewistonian. So I'll be here. So like, I have five, seven, seven kids right now. They're all here. They're gonna be going to mosque. So in the future, you know, we're not gonna be staying in this little mosque that we just had an issue today. We're planning on like buying a huge land elsewhere, you know, at this grow-up, because we're not gonna be only ten thousand people right now. We're gonna be more than that. So we are just support this plan that we suggested to at least grant the mosque. You know, and then as far as safety concern, I don't see any issue with safety. We're here to support and make sure that everyone is safe with us, including our neighbor. We're here to be friendly, like be like brothers and sisters, and then as a Muslim, we always like love everyone, and then we love Lewiston. So we need this granted, and we hope things will be well, and will be no issues from now on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Yeah, please.
My name is Mohamed Hassan. I have to say where I live. I live on Lisbon Street, two-sixty-five Lisbon Street.
Could you speak up a little bit, Mohamed?
Yeah, sorry. So one thing I want to say is, one concern, one you brought up is the fact that how would we like put on, like enforce, I guess, the occupancy limits, even currently, we're already going over it. But I don't, I think you guys should pass this to show like support for the, because this is not a hundred and seventy people that came from the mosque. This is like ten or, that helping to try and manage everything, and then you guys could show your support that you want us to become people who can, the mosque independently is limiting occupancy, making sure everything is under regulation and all that. And we do have volunteers standing out there on Fridays. We haven't done the best job, but we try, and we're making progress, and this is something that takes time. And the people, they like, they don't want to walk from the coliseum, but they don't have the, we didn't put out enough awareness to go park over there and don't park here, but we're working on that, and it takes time. And I think, I don't want it to become like a mosque versus the city type of thing, where rather that you guys should show the support and then help the mosque to become like some people who independently manage this problem on their own. And yeah, and actually, for the past few months, I'm the, I was the guy standing out in the parking lot, telling people, you know, don't park here, make sure the parking is blocked once it's filled, the twenty-five spots. And I'm working on and making sure people, you know, stay out of the Italian Bakery and the neighbors' area. the neighbors' area. And I think if we just get a couple more volunteers like that, we can properly like manage this problem. And I think if you guys support this and increase occupancy, it's only a positive thing. And it doesn't create any kind of split between the community or whatever.
Okay.
Sorry that I was talking all shaky.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor or in opposition?
Good evening. Matthew Terrio, 243, 245, 239 Bartlett Street. I stand before you and I have absolutely no new information for you guys. I just kind of want to re-summarize what you're sitting here with. City staff came on two separate incidences and observed that there was almost 75 cars that were there. That's with no expansion, nothing. Even looking at expanding the parking to what they're doing right now of 48 spaces still does not equal the 75 that's being used. McGraw Park's being double parked in and they're still not having enough, even utilizing McGraw Park, the parking on the street, and they still have access to the Coliseum and that's not being used. Just to kind of, I only got three minutes here to answer a couple hits that were here and I was told that it was, it's only 45 minutes and we should put up with this. You have to understand that we run an emergency wrecker service to be able to leave. We get calls from the state police, sheriff's department, police department that we respond to. When we can't leave our yard because the yard is blocked, we lose that call. This isn't a AAA call for $45. The last one that we lost was almost a $30,000 call because we couldn't get our truck out. City staff actually observed our truck parked in McGraw Park this past week. The reason being, and I have pictures to support it, we couldn't pull back into our own yard as our wrecker when I came back from a call. My guy circled the block three times, there was a car parked right in the entrance and he could not get into our yard whatsoever. So he turned around and went and parked in McGraw Park. We're just trying to run a business here, but we keep getting kicked back with this. To answer another question, that this has never been an issue, I've had communication with Dave Hedinger, who's no longer here, staff, police department, we're going on not one year, not two year, not three year, we're going on four, five and six years that this hasn't changed. And I guess I'm asking, even if this isn't approved, what do we do at our end to fix this? Because clearly with no expansion, we're already way above and beyond, they've already admitted that they're above the occupancy permit for there, they're above the parking permit for there. I mean, at what point in time, if this were a bar or another business, whether it's a mosque, a church or anything else, if this were another business, you wouldn't be tolerating this. And I guess that's my question, as another business owner, what do I do at my end besides move to Auburn? That seems to be the only fix these days. Looking for some answers.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Terrio. I own 243, 245, 240, 239. This never ends. We deal with this all the time. This is an intense, and I've sat in your chairs, I was planning, remember five years, an intensification, and that's why I gave you the definition, is an overuse in parking and in usage which impacts abutters. They've been impacting us. The one thing in question right here, and I bring this up to the architect also, 256 Bartlett Street, which is to the right of what you're looking at up there, because Bartlett Street is at the bottom. When we left them last time, the meeting before it was extended, Matt and I spoke to the architect outside and he told us, and he can correct me, he says, I was not allowed to look at 256 Bartlett Street. 256 Bartlett Street impacts this project. There's no parking. You haven't seen a permission or an easement or whatever in regards to 240 Bartlett Street or for 240 Bartlett Street from 256. Why is that? Why haven't you seen, you've seen the language for the Coliseum, but you haven't seen this magic easement that supposedly is going to create one entrance coming in? Now where is 256 gonna park? What's, how is 256 handling their water usage as far as stormwater? All of this is going behind. Understand, I spent a quarter of a million dollars over 20 some odd years ago building the project on Bartlett Street. Nobody wanted to go on Bartlett Street. I did that. I had to provide 72 spaces on my parking lot, I had to provide on-street drainage, I mean onsite drainage. I was not allowed to impact other abutters. So I don't know what more you want out of us. I really don't. And I have made it clear to staff, my only other recourse after this, we're gonna go to court. I'm very familiar in that area. And if I have to, I'll bring past planning board members, I'll bring past chief of police, I will bring them in, okay? This is not the first time we've made complaints. Mr. Hedinger has a long list of emails that my son has addressed with him, that I have addressed with him. I don't think you people have had copies at all. Because it's that thick. I'm not making this up, don't have to make it up. And what I have on my side that a judge is gonna love are pictures. Endless pictures of how many cars, times, sequence, people backing in out of Mayotte sausage. Mark Mayotte has a right to run his business and not be impacted. Heard the time.
Yeah. Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against?
So earlier, um...
Could you please state your name and where you live, please?
My name is Abdurrahman Farah. I live in 53 Maple. So earlier when he said the reason the parking should be bigger, it's the same reason he said we shouldn't increase the parking, is the same reason this needs to be passed. We need bigger parking space for our growing community. The more we grow, the bigger our space will need. We understand this might cause concern for y'all, but we are growing as a community and a lot of people are coming, a lot of people are becoming Muslim. You know, the city is growing and this, we need this to be passed. And then one thing I'll quote, this is a hadith from the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, this is what he taught us, to welcome our neighbors, okay? This reports the message of Allah, peace be upon him, said whoever believes in Allah in the last day, let him honor his neighbor. Okay, we will welcome him, okay? We've been nice to him. We will love him to come to our community and talk as neighbors, you know what I'm saying? And just, we just want him to be welcomed and we know the reason why, I know he has a business, we just want him to be, like we want our neighbor just to be together like this, okay? You know, we don't want to have enemies, we don't want to have, you know, and if you would like to come to the mosque and talk about Islam, I'll welcome you and talk about it. Okay? And that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
Could we have you spell your name, please? Excuse me.
A B D I R A H M A N.
Thank you.
You've already spoken once.
You want me to spell my name?
Okay, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against?
Elizabeth E.
Yes.
Said E A M E S.
Okay, in that case, I'm gonna close the meeting. Are you gonna speak?
Yeah.
Okay, we all gotta hurry up.
My name is Carl Shillian and I live in Lewiston. I appreciate the business owners coming forward. It sounds, you know, there's, I realize emotions are running high and businesses for sure need the ability to operate unimpeded. I, this has been continued how many times?
This is the third time.
This is the third, yes. So my suggestion would be, you know, and it's clear that the mosque is making some progress, but they need to make a little more. And I would support or I would encourage the planning board to consider another continuation to allow the mosque time to educate worshippers, develop a plan to handle traffic concerns for the nearby businesses and, you know, really just kind of, you know, come together to create a way forward. So that way, business concerns can be addressed appropriately and worshippers will be free to worship at the mosque. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure if we can postpone it again. Shelley, I don't think we can, we have to do action tonight, correct?
I think with the mosque's agreement to continue it, you possibly could. I mean, we do have timelines, but I think if people were in agreement. I did wanna provide a little additional information. I know people have talked about the Coliseum agreement quite a bit this evening. When the planning board met in January and looked at this, we did discuss the fact that under our location of off-street parking facilities, there is an allowance that in zones that aren't residential, which this is highway business, so it's not residential, that off-street parking that you can't provide onsite could be provided somewhere else. But I do want to point out that it's supposed to be parking that's held in fee simple or approved tenure. So it needs to be something that the mosque would actually have control over and it needs to be ongoing. And what currently is in place is a temporary, just agreement that you can use some extra parking spaces. So it isn't really something that would meet our current ordinance requirement, the use of the Coliseum parking. And my understanding from them is that they believed it was a temporary agreement as well. So I'm not sure that that's the answer that we're looking for, for the problem.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this proposal? In that case, I will close it to the public at this time and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Okay, just want to point it out.
Uh...
Just one, one...
Yeah, go ahead.
...to a temporary agreement, stop paying space on behalf of the right and the signature to use it.
Okay, you need to, you need to give that to staff, please, or give them a copy of it, so...
Okay.
Okay, because what we had in January said temporary. So, okay. So we're back to the board, Mr. Markott.
Well, I initially was going to ask the question about the Coliseum agreement, but it seems like there's another new wrinkle already. So what we saw in January, does it even apply?
Oh, I'm sorry, what do you mean by apply?
Well...
Is it, is it, does it meet our standards for off-street, off-site parking?
What we had received was just simply a one-page agreement that parking there during the winter was allowed. It didn't really specify long-term, like there were no years or for dates on there. There was nothing that stated, you know, that they had a right for ongoing or how many parking spaces they had a right to. So it was, it was fairly vague.
But it was pitched to us as a device to move this process forward, to encourage a positive vote. Now, I don't think we've seen an agreement for McGraw Park to be used in any way, shape or form.
There isn't one. It's just public parking.
And the pictures that were distributed show double park and quad park in that park. And any development increase would obviously encourage more increase, as we hear. Everything's growing, population's going to increase. If I understand correctly, that the 140-person occupancy is something that the state marshal agreed to?
No. The fire marshal approval of the architectural updates to the building was sort of a standard approval for up to 300 people occupancy.
Up to 300.
So it's not related to the parking at all.
Because are we agreeing to the 140 in our language? I keep rereading that sentence and we're agreeing to 23 additional spaces, but the 140 just seems to sit there, it's not part of the, we're agreeing to that.
That's entire, that's the question before the planning board tonight, is what, if you do allow an increase of occupancy with this increased parking, what would it be? There's, you haven't made a decision as to what that number would be.
Well, I'm just thinking that if they're allowed up to 300, and it doesn't matter what we do, they could stack 10 people to a car and quickly approach that 300 and that would be permitted, from my understanding. And obviously with the limited amount of parking, even at 48 spaces onsite, that'll further increase the usage of whatever alternative parking there might be in the neighborhood. And I come, I still come back to, I've seen Engine 3 go down Bartlett Street. And if we get a major structural fire in the Burt Street area, there could be a problem and a life is taken in a split moment. It can happen during the 45-minute worshiping session, it can happen in the middle of the night. But that's always a concern, it should be a concern, of a planning department. I don't care what's happening in Auburn, I care about what's happening in Lewiston and we're discussing this particular property right now. And here's another concept, it's called adverse impact. I believe that this development review would create a huge adverse impact on what's already been there, what's been there for decades. When we talk about certain properties there, certain businesses that are there, they've been there since the 1940s. And to address something that was said earlier about no complaints from other abutters, a lot of people don't like to make complaints. Don't like to make them to the person directly, maybe kind of have private conversation somewhere. Don't want to put them on public for sure, because if they make their complaints public, even if they're valid complaints, they're called racist. It's called the race card. And take offense of having to hear that every time I sit at this diocese on intense issues such as this, that's before us, whether it was when I was on the city council or whether it's my tenure here, which exceeds more than 10 calendar years at this point. So that's what I gotta say about the issue.
Okay, anyone else? Amy?
Thank you. So I would just like to agree with Mayor Shillian about giving this a little bit more time, especially if the mosque is willing to do things like have shuttle service to the Coliseum and more volunteers in the parking lot. But I would say that we should put a time limit on it with specific performance parameters so that for the next four Fridays or six Fridays, you send photos of the Coliseum parking lot, of your parking lot, of the McGraw parking lot, so that we can watch as you succeed in solving this problem yourselves. Without that, I think it would be, you know, to the business owner's point, you know, when does it stop? And I think that you guys have to prove that you can stop it and I think you need to do it in short order.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with what Amy said that, you know, it seems like there is a lot of friction around parking, a lot of friction around, you know, trying to get that resolved and that that journey has really just started, even though this has been a longer-term problem. I think, you know, the original proposal that was brought to us when this was originally submitted just probably isn't going to work at this point and we need to think about, you know, what something would look like if it meets the needs of the neighborhood. My personal thought on this is, you know, if the problem is there's cars being parked elsewhere, extra parking, hopefully will alleviate that. I think, you know, again, from what I've heard from other folks on the board and what I've heard from folks in the audience, is that there is this fear that it's gonna cause additional use, that, you know, we're gonna go from an overused facility and we're gonna expand that overuse. And so I think that's another key part of, you know, making sure that this process can move forward, that everyone's needs can be met, is demonstrating that that overuse won't happen. And it sounds like you're making a lot of steps to get to that point by having volunteers, but, you know, what the person said earlier, you know, first volunteer on this and you're getting more folks every day. So I agree with Amy that, you know, if we're gonna move forward with this, there needs to be... we're gonna move forward with this, there needs to be time bounds on it. There needs to be a demonstrated change. I also didn't get the sense from public comment that folks on either side of the issue have been talking directly with each other. And I would encourage all of those entities to try and talk to each other, and not wait for one to come to the other, to the other. And this is just an impression, and it's not, 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 not a judgment, but I would just would encourage it yet again, even if it's already been done and we didn't hear about it tonight, that it sounds like that just really needs to happen.
Anyone else on the board wish to make a, okay, so, all right, so we can either vote, or do we want, can I have a show of hands? Do we wanna postpone it to give everyone a chance to work better together, or do we wanna vote this, this evening? Roger? Vote it or postpone it?
Well, I think we're kicking the can down the road if we continue to postpone it. I think we have to make a decision in one way or the other.
Okay.
And now's the time to do it.
All right. Mark?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't, yeah, no, I'm fine with making a decision to postpone along with Amy's suggestion about having demonstrated improvements on addressing the parking issue.
Okay.
If that's allowed, I don't.
Right. Mike, postpone or vote?
Bit of a toss-up. I don't see things improving going down the road, but if there's an opportunity to, and there's a willingness, obviously, by the applicant and by certain members of the board, then could kick the can down the road, and then finally come up against the end of the road at some point.
Right.
So I, so I'm a little torn on that one.
Okay. So since, my sense is that we've got about five people that are willing to put a postpone it, would, so would you be willing to, if we postpone this to the next planning board meeting in two weeks, that would you be willing to, to work and, and try to, you know, make sure that nobody parks in the driveway of across the street, or, you know, parks where they're not supposed to, and the gentleman offered a shuttle, you know, encourage your members to use the shuttle, and, and come back and see if we can't, you know, get a little bit more cooperation between the two, between the two, the neighbors and, and your worshippers?
Absolutely. If that is okayed, and we don't mind. And also, for the record, I wanted to clarify that the Coliseum agreement is at no cost, and we can park anywhere. That, and for however many we want, that is not available on our site.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I bring up one thing?
Absolutely, Roger.
Shelley, can you contact Public Works and find out if there's a possibility of them putting up no parking beyond this point signs along Bartlett Street that were there? I think it would satisfy Mr. Terrio and his business, as well as the... Is there parking signs there now?
Yes. Yes, and PD has done, tried to do an excellent job of trying to enforce it. But my son was told one day, it's only a parking ticket.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I would...
Could I jump in?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure two weeks given, kind of, our need to get more information back to you in a packet from the, you know, from the mosque. I'm suggesting that maybe a four-week would make more sense, and then...
Okay. So four weeks, four weeks puts us to...
April 11th, is it?
Uh, March 11th.
Sorry, yep, March 11th.
March 11th is our, it would be that, that meeting? Okay, so let's, so I wouldn't, Mark?
I'm sorry, I just have a...
Yeah, sure.
I wouldn't be in favor of postponing just for, you know, well, you've shown for these last couple of weeks that you've been able to reduce the parking. I would be in favor of postponing to allow them to get time to get real hard agreements with the Coliseum or with other area, you know, within the, within that area of parking agreements, like the Lewiston Mall, or the parking lot at the Public Theater. If they could go and get hard agreements with those, with those businesses or those entities to say, yes, we will allow them to park here, and then some sort of hard agreement with the nonprofit that, yes, we will provide shuttle service to the, to the mosque. Because if we just go off of, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do a better job, that, that doesn't seem to me to be a long-term solution.
Okay, we could make that a part of the postponing, okay. So at this point, in that case, we could, I'd entertain a motion to postpone to the March 11th meeting, and for the mosque to come back with a more detailed agreement with the Coliseum that has the specifications that, that the staff says that they, they need. So do I have, do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, certainly.
What you're describing, and I forget the vocabulary that Shelley used earlier, postponement with specifics?
Continuation.
Continue it with, with...
With hard benchmarks.
Conditions, with conditions.
So that would be one of the conditions, or maybe the only one, but, yeah, because if we, like what was said by Mr. Roy, that if we just...
Postpone.
Postpone it, continue it with no instruction, then we'll be in the same place when it comes back to us. And I wanna make sure that what we're voting on, and I still haven't decided which way I'm voting, so don't count me on one side or the other. I wanna make sure that that specific is there, because if in four weeks, that's not been achieved, I think that makes our decision a little bit easier.
Okay. Amy first, 'cause she had her hands up.
And I just wanna say, while we're talking about conditions, that we need, like, three photos every Friday. Like, let's be really specific of what we're asking in terms of visual evidence, so that we're all just looking at the facts.
Yeah, just, just to add on to that, I, I wonder if it would be worthwhile for us to talk about some of the conditions that we're looking for now in specificity before continuing, and just list that out so that it's on public record, that everyone knows what the benchmark is that needs to be met here, so there isn't any confusion in four weeks. Is that something that we're able to do, or is that something that has to come from stem, Shelley?
No, I think what you're asking for, you know, you're, at this point in time, I think, since it's not, you're not really putting conditions, it's not an approval, right? So you're postponing, and you're stating to the applicant what you would need in order to help you make a decision in four weeks. In some cases, like the off-street parking, you're pointing to what the requirements are in the code, and stating that their current agreement doesn't need that. And if that was going to be considered, they would need an agreement that meets that. Whether that's possible or not would be for them to find out, whether they, you know, can find an off-site location that meets the, the requirements. And then if there is additional information you want them to provide you in the next four weeks, like photographs, or counts, or other information, then you could request that as well.
Got it.
Okay.
Shelley, the word I was grasping for was deliverables.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So we made a list of deliverables.
Yeah.
Okay. So I've just taken a few notes. So we, we would continue till the March 11th meeting, and we would need a more specific agreement with the Coliseum?
I think we would like an agreement that meets the city's requirements for...
Correct, right.
Off-site parking.
For off-site parking.
For off-site parking at the Coliseum, or, or an other location. And then three photos a week showing, showing the parking situation.
So specifically showing usage of the applicant's lot, usage of the city lot at the park?
Yeah, and, and across the street.
And then condition of lots and driveways for...
Neighbors.
For neighbors within three property, three properties?
No, it's gonna go through the whole block.
The whole block, Roger?
Yep.
Okay. So look, you know, photo that documents the condition of the parking situation on the block.
Okay.
And a photo of the Coliseum parking lot?
Oh, okay.
Also?
Plus, okay, plus photo.
Isn't the block lots and cities?
Yes. Yeah, the on-street parking.
Oh, the on-street parking is, on-street parking, it's allowed, so this doesn't matter. Whether, whether it's them or someone else, it's, it's, it's allowed. Okay, so do I have a motion, what I specified? Or do you want me to specify it again?
I have one more thing, Justice.
Yes.
In terms of the timing of the photograph, would be like right in the middle of the worship, when everybody's parked and in the building?
Yeah.
So whatever that time is, if it's noon or 12:15, Justice.
Right, okay.
I do have a, I don't know, I do have a question, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but when we had gone and done counts a couple of weeks back, the mosque was parking a number of vehicles onsite, close to the amount that they're asking for, or even more than that. And then since discussing with them their current approvals, they've been limiting the number of parking onsite to 25, which has exacerbated some of the off-site issues. So in the next four weeks, I guess staff could use a little guidance, and perhaps the mosque could, as to whether it would be, you know, I mean, staff's position with this has always been, you know, if they have the area onsite, then, you know, let them park onsite, even if it's not part of the approved plan from 2012. That's what we've historically been allowing. So the question, I guess, going forward would be if there's any guidance as to whether, you know, they should go back to trying to park, you know, 45, 50 cars onsite, or can keep it at the 25. And I don't really know how to advise on that, you know, what's kind of the best. In some ways, having them use more parking onsite would show more of the actual condition once the parking lot is built. So I'll just put that out there. If the planning board wants to make a suggestion on that, you are welcome to. You don't need to.
I'm still wondering why 256 Bartlett isn't being discussed at all?
Because this isn't a part of the, of this project.
They have an easement. Where's that easement?
Mr. Terrio, I'm...
Not a problem. The attorneys will be here next time.
Whatever. Okay, so what do we wanna do? Do we wanna vote on this, or do we wanna postpone it?
Well, I can make a motion...
Please.
To postpone, given for four weeks, provide, so that the mosque can provide the deliverables to help inform our vote.
Okay, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Amy, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
No.
Uh, Mark Roy?
Yes.
Mike Markott?
No.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. So it's three to two, and it does not pass. Is it correct?
It would be four to two.
Four to two. Okay, four to two.
So that does pass.
That it, it does, okay. All right, we'll see you guys back on the 11th, and we'll entertain pictures and reports in the meantime.
Could I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Sorry. I am curious about this easement, even though it's not part of this plan. So if you could also get back to us with that, the details on that, and how that works, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide you with the deed language. It's on, it's, I, it might be on one of the plans even. I don't remember if you have a survey that shows.
That's fine. We can, we can do that in the future, but I didn't wanna ignore that.
A follow-up to what Amy asked. Not just the deed language, but how it works, and because there is no fence between the two properties, the one, the traffic movement between two properties, and how it affects each of them, and the implications on whether it would, what's the name of the enterprise that's next door?
M-E-R-S.
The main immigrant.
And if this activity that they're granting by easement, if it exists, how does it impact them, and does it put them in violation of anything that they're responsible for?
Okay. It's essentially a shared access easement, so a driveway.
But, but I wanna see how it all plays out.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, and we'll see you in four weeks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, if you want, excuse me, if you wanna have conversations, could you take it out into the hallway, because we have some other business to take care of? Thank you. No, that's fine. Okay. Next hearing, a public hearing, is the planning board sending a recommendation to the city council on the Lewiston capital improvement plan. Okay, so we have two ways of doing this, guys. We can either, you know, slog through and mention everything we want not to be done, or the shortlist is probably what the stuff we would like them to keep, for sure. So I'm thinking the shortlist of, let's do the, the stuff that we would like city council to keep, as opposed to all of the items that we want them to, you know, cancel, take out of the, yes, Mr. Markott?
Okay. I remember hearing that concept at the last meeting, and kind of bothered me a little bit. I had come up with some sort of message that is more general.
Okay.
Because the problem I have with the idea of what to keep is, we can say what we wanna keep. Finance committee can say what they wanna keep. City council ultimately has the decision, and they have their wanna-keeps. By the time you get done, everybody wants to keep everything, and you just can't have everything. And that, I sort of built that into my comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll save that to the end, though, because if it's the wish of the board to follow that particular concept, it may have value in the sense that we'd be here forever trying to say what we didn't wanna keep.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons that I suggested doing it this way, because it's, you know, I mean, we've got this huge thing that if we go through item by item, we're gonna be here for another couple of hours. And I don't think we, you know, we wanna do that. We went through it last time and, and gave a lot of comments, so...
And, and obviously, the planning board has what would be expected of a planning board, to have for priorities. Because there is more to planning than just building parks and trails, and so on and so forth. But that is sort of the planning board's world. So that would tend to be the items that get, not necessarily preserved, but it would be part of the recommendation.
Yeah.
And that's why I had asked about differences between Island Point and Samad Payne Park on one occasion, is because if I had to choose between some of those projects, I'd have a priority over the other, when it came down to nuts and bolts of it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Roger, sure.
Yeah, I appreciate the letter that we got from the airport commission regarding... Yeah, I appreciate the, uh, letter that we got from the airport commission regarding, you know, a lot of the things that they, that we had expressed interest in. And one that I still have an issue with is the fire foam trailer. Uh, I was not under the impression that they were going to be using it for any other reason, other than the airport. And I'll come to find out, they're going to be using it for oil fires, you know, that are off-site as well. If that was the situation, why are we funding the airport to buy this foam trailer? It should be Auburn, Lewiston.
Agreed.
You're looking at me, but I don't think I'm prepared to answer questions like that tonight.
Well, I think that's something that should be taken up, you know, I mean, we're saying we're gonna spend X number of dollars to, to buy a foam trailer, and it's supposed to be parked at Central Station in Auburn, and yet now they're gonna be using it for other situations, other than airport fire. That I don't agree with.
Well, I, I think what he was saying was that if there's a plane that crashes outside of the airport, it's better if it's at a central fire station where it can be hooked up immediately and transported, whereas if it's stored at the airport and the crash happens, you know, in Lewiston, then they've got to go to the airport, get into the airport, which apparently their security is not that, you know, whatever. It, it's difficult to get in and out, and then go to Lewiston, whereas they would start from the fire station and head to the fire.
No, I, I agree with that. I agree with that point, but what my issue is, is the fact that now comes to light that they're gonna be using it for other situations, other than, you know, airport situation. In other words, an oil fire, an oil tanker flips over on, uh, uh, Western Avenue, for instance. You know, they're gonna use that foam trailer for that.
Right.
So if that's a situation where it's gonna be a community foam trailer, then, you know, it should be divided up between Lewiston, Auburn, and not the fire, the Auburn, you shouldn't be funding it through the, uh, the airport fund.
Go ahead, Roger.
Just sort of, I forgot to bring my copy of the LCIP, but if it's coming out of the airport fund, it's jointly funded by Lewiston and Auburn, right?
Yep.
So, so what you're really asking for, Roger, is you, you'd prefer for it to show on the balance sheet as a joint purchase of the two cities from their fire departments, rather than as a joint purchase of the two cities.
Yeah.
At the airport. So really, it's just a naming thing, not so much of a money.
No, 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 no. The foam trailer is...
It's just sort of a semantics thing.
Either way, but the thing is, it's where it's funded and how it's funded, is I think is an issue.
Yeah.
Would the funding, I guess this is maybe more of a question for folks who have done this more than I have, would the funding source be any different, or would it be through a capital budget? Because, I mean, it's capital equipment, if it's bought for the fire department.
Probably the same, it's just a technicality of, of who's gonna own, own the thing, maybe, or something like that, I, I think. You know, if we get federal funds for it, or whatever, maybe not, maybe, maybe not, um...
The LCIP does not have federal funds associated.
Uh, let's see, yeah, this is strictly, according to this, it's strictly half and half city. It's on page nineteen. It's, it's thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-two five each, each city. It's only sixty-five, uh, it's only sixty-five thousand dollars, you know? It's a piece of cake compared to a school building. No, I understand where, where you're coming from, um, I'm, I don't know. I mean, uh, again, so where do we want to start, guys? So do we, I mean, somebody's got to start somewhere, and I... So, do we have any recommendations from anyone?
Would it be of interest to hear Michael's suggestion?
Well, my suggestion reads more like, uh, a budget message from the, uh, from the finance committee, but, um, and, um, I had to even make my own notes down at the bottom, because some of the language in here is animated and high-spirited. So keep that in mind when you cringe at some of my adjectives. As, as the planning board must consider a wide range of disciplines when considering zoning land use, private development proposals, public parks, and recreation and trails projects, and all facets of planning for the future growth and success of a community, it must not only weigh in on the priorities in public works, water source, stormwater schools, recreation, police, fire, public safety, and airport. It must also take into consideration the financial stability of a community to sustain capital investment choices in the near term and long range. To financially handcuff a community with ever-increasing debt load without a mechanism to provide more meaningful business and industry to secure the tax revenue necessary to pay for it is shortsighted and chasing after rainbows and pixie dust. Now, there is a reason the planning board was charged with giving a recommendation on such things as the capital improvement plan and acquisitions and dispositions of property. It is all integrated into one neatly woven fabric, where prior proper planning prevents pitifully poor performance. We must maintain the eighty percent rule to keep from going down the black hole we have seen in many other stressed communities across the nation, remember Detroit. So that, that's sort of what I put together on the fly before I left for the weekend, and I'm only revisiting it now.
So you don't have any specifics?
So I, I don't have specifics, uh, I mean, depending on what other members in the head, I'd probably be more than happy to cast a vote on any individual item to be on a list, or even on a list for a priority, or even on a list that it's at the bottom of a priority list, either way. But, uh, my, my biggest concern is that this is the largest ask we have ever seen. We were told that, uh, the council last year had to cut something like forty-nine percent of the original ask to get to the eighty percent, and I believe that, uh, the eighty percent last year was achieved. I believe that, uh, we got this, uh, statistical chart, per my request at the last meeting, and it says, um, within limitation, well, I guess I'm wrong. Two thousand twenty-four, because we're looking at two thousand twenty-five.
Yep.
Was a no, and for the last three fiscal years, it was a no. And prior to that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventy, out of the previous eight, there were two that did meet the limitation, and they were closer to today's date. The limitation was met for the first five years of the eighty percent rule. The original ninety-seven percent rule, I believe, was in effect for three years. And when it was breached in two thousand thirteen, that's when they went to the eighty percent rule. And I was there on the finance committee for both of those. I remember asking for, uh, ninety percent, when they were pitching ninety-seven, I was laughed at, only to be chairing the meeting when they came in and said, can we get an eighty percent? And I says, that's better than my ninety, can we get seventy? That didn't happen, obviously. But, uh, we're stressing this community huge, and that is part of the planning process, as much as, uh, deliverables, the word for the day, deliverables for things like car washes, which I've always been a fan of, I've been disappointed that that item has been pulled out again and again over the years.
Oh, you mean the, the truck wash?
The truck wash.
Yeah.
I said car wash.
Yeah, you said car wash, and I say, well, you know...
The, the big truck wash.
Yeah, 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 public works.
Something that can take care of public works or of fire trucks.
Yeah.
And fire trucks was on my mind at the time, because we were buying a couple of million-dollar fire trucks.
Yeah.
We wanted them to last longer. So, so if we were to get to that one, that'd be on my priority list.
All right, so shall I just run down?
Let's do line, line by line?
Okay, let's do line by line, okay, so I'm gonna start with the airport, technical upgrades.
I'd like to make the case that that should be postponed, I don't, I don't know if we got a...
I believe, uh...
Did we get a, did we get a response about how that ties into funding?
Hmm, no, it, it, he talked about it, but it, he, he wanted that just because it, it's difficult to get in and out. I, I would honestly be in favor of that, because it, it's going to be an electronic system where the gates will, uh, be more secure. And, and in part of Mr. Levante's, uh, report, he mentions that, you know, somebody has to physically go around the perimeter of the airport, locking and unlocking gates, and, and, you know, electronic gates that, that open and close by themselves sometimes close on people, and... And so these new upgrades would be, uh, make the pla, not just necessarily secure, but it would be, um, less, um, manpower-intensive.
Yeah, but what I wonder about is, like, how much money does that actually save? And that's, that, I think, I was more...
It's a security issue.
It's a security issue, it's not a money.
Well, you were just talking about it being a manpower issue, which is a money issue.
Yeah.
So I think my question about this, um, is really around it, you know, uh, I think I asked the question, you know, has the current system caused oper, like, acute operational issues? And it sounds like it, it's a pain in the neck, it's not particularly secure, it's not up to date. And I understand all of that, um, and maybe it has given some trouble when we've had a presidential visit, or, you know, other sort of, um, larger-than-life, out-of-the-ordinary thing. But like, day-to-day operational, day-to-day cost, what's going on? And, and, you know, if it's not causing, you know, if it's causing sort of heartburn, but not heartache, and not, you know, a li, like, an extreme liability, I, I think it should be cut.
All right.
And if we're, you know, if we have to make a decision.
All right, so yes or, yes or no, I'm gonna go yes or no on this, and, and, because we, we can't, I mean, we've got two, two full pages.
Yeah, let's just do yes or no.
So I'm gonna say the thing, tell me yes or no, and, and I'm gonna mark it down so that they can have the, the record for, to give to city council.
Yeah.
So, that sound good?
Can you just raise hands, or?
Well, you can raise hands, yeah, and I'll count them, and, and, okay.
So yes means priority?
Well, yes, yes, we want it to stay.
To stay.
And no, let's let it go, okay?
Yeah.
So, technical upgrades, yes, no?
Yes.
Michael?
Wait, cut it or keep it?
Keep it, if it's a yes, it's a keep, no, it's a, it's a get rid of, okay? So, yes, yes, Michael?
No.
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 Yes, so it's...
Three to three.
Three to three, all right. Pavement management program. I mean, listening to what, what, uh, reading what Mr. Levante said, Jonathan, you know, these are things that are, are not gonna happen anyways, because of, of everything that's been going on at the airport. At least, that's how, that's the gist of what I got from, from this stuff. So, yes or no? Michael?
I, I have a question. You're saying that this is not gonna happen anyway?
Well, it, it, it is, but at, at a later date, I mean, it's not.
And, uh, and there's no federal funding, uh, being secured for it?
No.
Okay, it's already, no.
Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark, yes, Michael?
No.
Alex?
No.
Amy?
Nope.
Okay, so we've got two...
What about you, like, Lucy?
No. So it's two to four. No. So it's yes and no, okay, so when I say the numbers, it's, yes is the first number, no is the second. Okay, guys get that?
Yeah, so that was a no.
So that's a no?
Yeah.
Okay, Hanger. I mean, he, he talks about, that, that's got money.
Yeah, that's part of congressional...
That's, that's a congressional, so, and, and they can make money with this one.
Yeah.
Roger?
No.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, so we've got, uh, five yes, and one...
Could I make a suggestion to the chair?
Yeah, sure.
Can we go with the term cut or keep, or keep or cut, rather than yes or no?
Okay.
I think, I think it's getting a little confused.
So this is, so the yes is keep? And the no is cut? Okay.
Thank you.
Works, let me, firefighting foam trailer. Keep or cut?
Keep, keep.
Michael?
Cut.
Okay, Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
Keep. So that's five to one. Okay, emergency nine-one-one, virtualization server replacement.
Keep.
Keep. Michael?
Keep.
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. Six to nothing, oops, wrong place, six to nothing, okay. Nine-one-one communication syst, center.
Quick clarification on that one, that one was the one where we were talking about replacing HVAC system, correct? Or am I thinking of a different line? Because there was one with, one with the emergency dispatch center.
HVAC, HVAC is until twenty twenty-seven. It's the server inster, infrastructure replacement, which...
I think that...
No, that's, that's the one, that's the one, and that's the hundred and fifty.
Page twenty-two.
Yeah, page twenty, and then page...
Yeah.
Twenty-one, and twenty-two is the, the two and a half million.
Yeah, and that, and that was conditional on moving...
Yeah, that's condition on, uh, the police, Lewiston police moving, and everybody, everybody, so... Okay, so nine-one-one communication system, keep or, or cut?
Keep, keep, keep.
Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
Six to nothing. Bus transportation, that's an operational cost, it's, if we don't do this, uh, we, our, our part is twenty percent, and the federal government gives us eighty percent for the buses. Keep or cut?
Keep, keep, keep.
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 Okay, six-nothing. Citywide valuation, keep or cut? This is for the business part, uh, business equipment part of the value, reevaluation that they're doing, uh, act, they're starting to do, Roger, keep or cut?
Hey, I'm gonna fence on that one, I'll say keep.
Mark? Mike?
Cut.
Uh, Alex?
Keep.
Amy?
Keep.
Let me keep, so it's five to one. Canal ownership proj, projects, I mean, we talked about all of this stuff, uh, last time, so keep or cut? Roger, cut?
Keep.
Michael?
Cut.
Cut. Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
So one, two, three, four to two.
So you're a keep, Lucy?
It's keep, four to two, keep. Okay, Bates Mill, brownfield cleanup, uh, Roger?
I'm gonna have to cut the cord.
Cut.
Okay, Mike?
Cut.
Mike, okay, uh, Amy?
Remind me, don't we lose a bunch of federal money?
No, they've already, uh, uh, there was something in, in, in some of the stuff that we got that said that, uh, that five hundred thousand was going to be, isn't that, that gone out for bid? And gonna be done?
They have to spend it by June, so I believe.
Yeah, so they're going to be spending it there, yeah, that's gonna get spent.
Okay, so I don't have my copy of the plan, what, what is that specifically?
It's, it's the brownfield, it's, uh, three-point-nine million to clean up the PCBs and, and oils in, in the Bates Mill.
Which is necessary for demolition.
What you, it has to be done, whether it's demolished, or we sell it to plat, to prep, what plats. Okay, keep.
Keep.
Okay, so cut, 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 keep, keep, three to three. Public art funds, fifty-two thousand dollars, keep or cut?
Cut.
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 Keep.
Keep.
Okay, four to two, uh, no, it's, it's, uh, sorry, it's two to four.
So you, your vote is to cut?
To cut. Sorry.
Nope.
Two to four. Riverfront island implementation, Roger?
Keep, keep.
Michael?
On the boundaries of the riverfront?
Huh?
Riverfront, island.
Riverfront island met implementation, yeah, that's Island Point.
Island Point, cut.
Okay.
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. So that's five to one. Red shop shell preservation, Roger?
Keep.
Cut.
Cut.
Keep.
Okay.
Keep.
So that's three.
Keep.
Four. Uh, four to two. Destination amenities signage, Roger?
Cut.
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 Cut. Cut.
Cut, six-zero, three low, the tiffs for.
Zero-six.
Yeah.
He said six.
Oh, okay. I'm getting confused with my keeps and cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, the tiffs, um, basically we've got, you know, I mean, as much as I hate to tell you guys, we really don't have any choice.
No. Gotta keep it.
So, so that one is a, a six to nothing, cause.
No, I'm gonna vote for cut.
You're gonna vote for cut, you're gonna vote to cut, anybody else wanna vote for, to cut, keep? Okay, so it's five to one.
Well, I'm sorry, why is it, why are you saying it's not up to?
Well, because if they, if, uh, if Leveque doesn't get his, his tiffs, he's not gonna build.
Right.
And you're talking two buildings.
You're talking two buildings in, in, you know, in downtown.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna cut?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's four to two. Okay, equipment for the new police station, Roger?
Keep.
Mark?
Keep.
Michael?
Keep.
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
Okay, s- uh, six to nothing. Main Street Fire Station Replacement Project, we might as well do both at the same time, both fire stations.
Keep.
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 Keep, okay, six-nothing for both of them. Lewiston technology upgrades, Roger?
Cut.
Okay, Mark?
I'm sorry, what page is that?
Uh.
Yeah, okay, twenty-two, yeah, okay. Um, uh, I will keep that.
Okay, Michael?
Cut.
All right, uh, Amy?
I'm sorry, I don't have any.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the line item, and then we did receive response on this one.
Yep.
Uh, there was a question around, does MIS have cameras in fiscal year twenty-five and not for future fiscal years? That was an oversight on the director's part, typically adds a round of cameras and out years as they are constantly aging and need replacements. This has been their weakest link for years, they did start a radio replacement last year, uh, with last year's budget with fiber optic cable, replacing six of the failing radios. Largest improvement in network has seen in years, and there's been a notable difference in recording quality and availability.
Yep, keep.
Alex? Um, okay, now I've lost, lost count.
Cut.
Cut, Mark?
I said keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Cut, so that's, okay.
I said keep.
She said keep, so that's two-two.
Cut.
Cut, okay, uh, we'll do three-three. Comprehensive plan implementation, Roger?
Keep.
Keep.
Michael?
Keep.
Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
All right, six-nothing. Okay, public works buildings, the Lincoln Street Parking Garage tech repair, deck repair, sorry, um, Roger?
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, Michael?
Cut.
Okay, Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Cut.
Okay, uh, cut, three-three. Public Works Vehicle, the wash facility, we said we were gonna, okay, keep that one? Cause that's gonna appear in, in several places, I'm gonna skip when we get to other places.
Keep.
Cause it's broken down with the, with the sewer and the, and the water and, um, Mark?
Keep.
Keep. Keep.
Keep.
Okay, so that's six to, six to nothing. Public Works Building Fire Separation, Roger?
Uh, whoa, 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 whoa. Keep.
Keep.
Mike?
Keep.
Amy?
Keep.
Alex?
Keep.
Okay, six-nothing. Armory Interior Renovation Project, Roger?
Gotta keep it going, keep?
Yep.
Keep.
Cut.
Okay?
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, so we've got five to one. And Armory Building Exterior Renovation Project, Roger?
Keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Alex?
Keep.
Amy?
Keep.
Okay, five, one, again, City Hall Window Replacement Project, Roger?
Keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Keep.
Amy?
Sorry.
It's the City Hall Window Replacement?
Keep.
Okay, so that's five-one as well. Okay, Highway, Jan's Boulevard Rehabilitation, Roger?
Cut.
Okay?
Cut.
Keep.
(laugh) Michael, you have to be contrary, I'm kidding.
No, I, I've seen that one.
I know, I know.
And it's hard.
And, um.
Cut.
Cut.
Okay, so that's, uh, I'm a keep, so, so that's, uh, two to four. Bradre- Bradbury Road Rehabilitation, Roger?
Cut.
Cut.
Michael, cut?
Cut.
Uh, keep.
Okay, so that's five to one.
One to five.
One for keep, that was me.
Oh, okay. One to five, my god, okay. Complete Streets Implementation.
Keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. So that one's five to one, okay. Sidewalk Maintenance and Rehabilitation, Roger?
Cut.
Keep.
Keep.
Keep. Keep.
So that's four, uh, five to one. Street Maintenance Program, Roger?
Keep.
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 Michael?
Keep.
Alex?
Uh, reluctantly, keep.
Okay, yep, same here, gotta keep them going. Solid Waste Facility River Road Left Turn Lane, Roger?
Cut.
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 Cut it.
Okay, so that's zero to six, haha, I remember this time. Okay, MDOT, Long, Main Street, Longley to Pettingill Street, um, we don't have much choice, again, you know, we don't have much choice, city, I mean, the state's coming through, we gotta put in our thirty-seven thousand dollars. Roger?
Keep.
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 Keep. Okay, six to nothing, and, uh, East Avenue Tampa to Fairlawn, again, uh, state's coming through, so, keep?
Keep.
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 Okay, six to nothing, all right. Municipal Garage, Municipal Garage Vehicle and Equipment Replacement, that's one point two-five million, Roger?
Uh, cut.
Cut.
Cut with a qualified comment, um, probably would be, nah, I'd feel better deciding each individual item, because there will be things cut.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I agree with Mike.
Okay, so we wanna go, we wanna go individual on this one?
You gotta cut the whole thing, you gotta cut individual items.
Okay, so.
I'd love to cut the whole thing, but that would be.
Uh, what page is that, uh, anybody?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, thank you. Okay, so the individual items are on seventy, seventy-eight and seventy-nine, oh, no, just on seventy-eight. Okay, so sidewalk tractor, one ninety-five, Roger?
Keep.
Mark?
Cut.
Keep.
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 Okay, so we've got four cut, four keeps so far, and I'm, I'm a cut, so that's gonna be four to, four to two. Four keep, two, two cut.
Okay.
Two trailer dumps, they're dump trucks.
Keep.
Cut.
Cut.
Keep.
Keep. Okay, so we've got, again, four to two. Electrical Service Truck.
Keep.
Cut.
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 We asked for details on this, did we not get details?
Yeah, they said that, that this is gonna be like a pickup truck, that the guy's gonna break, take home.
Cut.
(laugh)
Oh, that was quick.
And work on lights, okay, now I've forgotten how, who, who's, who's what, Roger, say, tell again, because I've, I've lost.
Electric truck, right?
That was a keep.
That was a keep?
Cut.
Cut, cut.
Cut.
Cut, cut, so that's four, I'm, I'm gonna have to be a keep, because I, I liked his explanation. Okay, two and a half ton pickup truck, well, I mean, I, it, instead of having to go to the shop and get the, the bucket truck, he can go out.
Yeah.
Okay, two and a, two half-ton pickup trucks.
Cut.
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 Cut, okay, so that's zero to six. Hydrocider.
Cut.
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 Cut it.
Cut, zero to six. Remote Steep Drain Mower.
Cut.
Cut.
Cut. Keep.
Okay, and one to five, cut the sucker. Uh, one top dump with plow and brine tank.
Keep.
Cut.
Cut.
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, cuts, so two keeps and four cuts. Ten-wheel dump.
What was that, how'd you vote?
I, I voted to cut.
That was three to three then, right?
I, keep?
Keep. That was a cut.
Keep.
Cut, cut, and if you said cut, it's three-three.
No, I mean, Roger was keep, right? Oh, Roger, you're a keep? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so that's three to three, sorry, keep me, keep me honest, guys. Okay, ten-wheel dump plow truck.
Cut.
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 Cut it.
Okay, zero to six, roll-off truck.
Cut.
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 Cut. Keep.
Okay, cut, so that's one keep, five cut. Si- slide-in brine tank.
Keep.
Cut.
Cut.
Isn't that required, if you have the brine vehicle, that you need the tank?
No, it's like.
No, it's what, it's, it's like a pickup truck, and they slide this in, like they put the Sanders in the back.
Keep it, keep it.
Yep, okay, so Roger, you're a keep?
That was a cut.
Okay, you're a cut, you're a cut.
Keep.
Uh, cut it.
Okay, so that's three, three-three. Okay, all right, that takes care of that. All right, let's see, okay, uh, Public Works Open Spaces, Sunnyside Trail Extension, Roger?
Keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Keep.
Keep it.
Okay, uh, five to one, public restrooms.
To keep, right?
Yes, it's a keep, yeah, keep, five to one. Public Restrooms.
Cut.
Cut.
Michael?
Did everybody get the picture I sent around?
Yes, yes, actually, I, I have it.
If that's what we're getting for three hundred and fifty, I would've said yes, but, uh, I vote for cut.
Keep.
Keep.
Eh, actually, I, as much as I hate to, it's a keep.
So that was a.
When you're somebody like me, who needs to ba- needs to know where the bathroom is, wherever you are, it's a pain to be downtown, because there aren't in, there aren't any, okay.
That was a tie, right, three-three?
Yeah, it's a three-three, yeah. Sunnyside Park Renovations, Roger?
Yeah, keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Keep.
Cut.
Okay, and, cut, so that's two keep, four cut. Okay, public, solid waste.
Was that three-three?
No.
I thought it was three-three.
Oh, keep?
Keep.
Mark?
Keep.
Keep, cut.
Keep.
Keep, that's three, so cut, and I'm, I'm a keep.
Okay.
That's four to two. Yeah, I got it wrong, I got it backwards again. Shit, sorry.
I actually had a question about that one, if it was tied into other park.
I don't know at this point. Doesn't really make any difference. It's not going to make a hill of beans what we decide tonight, do you realize that, huh?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. I'm sorry?
It does to those watching.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, all right, solid waste, uh, leachate cleaning and inspection.
Keep.
Mark.
Keep.
Keep. Keep.
Keep.
Keep it.
All right, six, nothing. Solid waste collection carts and signs. We, again, we don't have much choice because the vendor's not going to be doing it the way they're doing it now, so Roger.
Keep.
Keep.
Cut.
Okay.
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, I'm a keep, so that's, again, that's a six, one, I mean, five, one, sorry. I'm getting tired, my... Sorry, guys. Okay, traffic signal upgrades. Roger.
Keep.
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 Keep. Keep.
Okay, six, nothing. Street light upgrades.
Keep.
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 Keep them.
Keep them, six, nothing. All right, school department, LHS Science Labs, we did get some information on that. Uh, Roger.
Cut.
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 Keep.
Keep. Cut, cut, so that's two.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
His response about why they provide, didn't provide a five-year plan was non-response.
It was a non-response, yeah, that part was, yeah. He beat around the bush about other things, but he never said why they, they can't do that.
They haven't given us a five-year plan for us.
No, they haven't given us a five-year plan in a number of years. Geiger Playground Edition. Raj.
Cut.
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 Cut, cut, cut. Okay, so that's zero, six. Grades six, eight, and central office expansion project, planning for it. Roger.
Cut.
Cut.
Michael, cut. Amy.
I think cut for this year.
Cut?
Cut for this year.
Okay, zero, six. District modular upgrades, McMinn and Montello, he did have, he did talk about that. So Roger.
Cut.
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 Alex, cut, okay, zero, six. District entryways and facade, facade, Longley and Montello. Roger. Oh, I, I'm not sure, he did have comments on that as well, uh, when we did get that.
Window roofing renovations.
Six eighty-six.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's security, right?
Security.
I'll cut.
It's not really security. So, uh, one keep, one cut, Mike.
Cut.
Cut.
Keep.
Alex.
Keep.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four. Four to two. Okay. Public Works, the wash facility, wash facility, we had six to nothing, so we'll continue because we can't have it only in one place, it's, it's in three places. Rehabilitation of old sanitary sewer mains and manholes. No, let's, let's wait till people fall through the, the pavement into the old sewer.
Crappy problem.
Yeah, you know, like happened in front of Grimmles a few years back when half the street disappeared. Roger.
Keep.
Keep.
Michael.
Look at the price, burns a hole in me.
I know it does.
Keep.
Yeah.
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, six, nothing. Equipment replacement program. Roger. Huh? Keep?
Keep.
Michael.
What equipment?
What equipment?
What equipment's being replaced?
Oh, I don't... Uh, where are we? Okay, so we should be just a few pages here.
Page ninety-nine.
Okay. Oh, it doesn't say.
It's all this on page one hundred.
One hundred is...
The sewer jet, the total, the total project, the life of the project.
Plague replacement.
That's a vacuum flusher.
Right, and it's a second payment on the vacuum, so, I mean, we've already got this up here, so I think we... Okay, so...
Keep.
Keep. Okay, so we've got keep, 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 keep. So six to nothing. Collection system inspection and rehabilitation.
Keep.
Keep.
This will allow for them to catch folks who are depositing into sewer unlicensed, I believe.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Part of this.
Yeah, so, keep.
Keep.
Keep. Michael.
And another thing is, uh, this is actually funded through the, uh, what, what do you call them? Uh, the fees, not, not...
Oh, like the sewer impact fee? Rain fees?
Uh, well, not just, just not the stormwater fee, but you have a water fee, you have a sewer fee, so this is not the tax, uh, the real estate tax bill that goes there.
Right, 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 okay.
That's the same, that's the same with the, for the sewer and the water system, they're all, they're all...
Yeah.
They're all self-funding.
Of course, that...
I mean, it raises rates, but...
It raises rates eventually. They like to go three years in each one and raise each one once every three years so that...
It's always, oh, yeah.
I hate to say, uh, yes, but yes.
Amy.
That was a yes across the board.
Oh, it's a yes across the board, okay, great. Six to nothing. Sewer pump station and generator replacements. Roger.
Yes.
Keep.
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 It's a keeper.
All right, six to nothing. Meter replacement program. Raj.
I have a question about this.
Yeah.
Is this, because it shows up under sewer and underwater.
Yes, it does.
Are these the smart meters?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, great. Roger.
What page are we on?
Oh, I'm in the early hundreds at this point. I don't know where the hell we are at this point. What page is, is this? The, uh, meter replacement, guys.
What, what's your question about it, Roger?
I had no idea we were...
Yeah, what, got it. Oh, so you're, you're just reading along, okay.
The next one is on page one hundred five, right?
It's six, one, oh...
Yeah, so it should be before one hundred five, but it's not.
It's not, yeah.
Some of these run a little out of order because they stretch into different budgets.
So it's on one twenty-one.
Oh, one twenty-one?
Yes, that's one twenty-one.
Yep, one twenty-one.
Yeah, meter, yeah.
Half of it is in the water and half of it is in the water.
Right, yeah, that's why. Okay.
Keep.
Keep, okay.
Keep.
Keep.
Keep it.
All right, keep it, six to nothing. Infiltration and inflow study. Roger.
Keep.
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 Keep it.
Keep it, six to nothing. Public Works Vehicle Wash Facility, that's a six to nothing. All right, Jan Boulevard Rehabilitation, we already, uh, we already did that one, it was two to keep and four to... To cut, so two and four, and it's going to be in underwater as well because it's two and four. Okay, Municipal Garage Vehicle and Equipment Replacement. That's, uh...
Could I already...
Um...
These may be under a separate budget because they're funded through the water rates.
Right, yeah, I think that's...
It's probably two pickup trucks.
Yeah, it probably is because that's what they had.
That's what that looks like.
That's what they had for two pickup trucks, uh, in, in the public works, so...
Yeah.
So, keep or, or cut, sorry. Mark?
Cut.
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 Cut it.
Cut it, so zero to six. Storm drain inspection, Raj.
Keep.
Keep.
Michael.
Cut.
Keep.
Keep.
Okay, so we've got, uh, five to one. Storm drains for road rehabilitation pro, projects. Roger.
Keep.
Keep.
Michael.
In the, with projects that probably got voted on earlier.
Yeah, that's with all the road rehab that we did.
Probably, yeah. Keep, I'm sorry, keep.
Keep it.
Okay, six to nothing. Culvert Replacement Program. Raj.
Keep.
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 Okay, six, nothing. Heart quality restoration, that's an ongoing thing, and it's never going to be good water quality. Anyways...
Keep.
Well, it's not. That's what he said when he was here.
It's like a money pit.
Yeah.
Cut.
Cut.
Cut. So you've got, so I've got a keep, keep, and a cut. Oh, cut, keep, cut, okay.
I think we have an EPA consent decree on that one, don't we?
Uh, whatever, yeah, I mean...
The council will make the decision.
The council's going to make the decision, so we can just...
Just, just for the folks back home.
So we got two...
If the EPA wants it, then keep.
Okay, so keep.
Keep it.
Keep, and so we've got, uh, three, three. All right, the seven ninety-five Lisbon Street Drain Outfall, that's near Sullivan Tire.
Yeah, but not the same thing.
But it's not, it's not why the, the garage is closed, but it's, anyways. Roger.
Cut.
Keep.
Michael.
Already one to one. A little background on that, it's not the sinkhole?
It is not the sinkhole.
No, it's not the sinkhole that's in the parking lot.
That is, that is a private drain.
Right.
And what is this, uh...
This is, this is the one that's...
Behind it?
No, this is where the, the street floods.
Yeah, so this runs from the street down the center of the property line between the restaurant and Sullivan Tire, and then there's an outfall that drains into the neighborhood behind there, and so this is...
Okay, so the outfall is behind Sullivan.
Right, right, yeah, it's down the cliff.
And they couldn't fix it right the last couple of times they did it. Uh, cut.
Okay, so that's two cuts and a one keep?
Keep.
And they couldn't, they couldn't fix it, what?
Well, he's, they, he said they couldn't fix it.
I've seen...
It's an editorial comment that he just made, okay.
They, they've actually spent money on that entire bankman back there at one point. It became the city's responsibility for some reason, it was even partially negotiated with Franklin Properties.
Okay.
And if that's still a problem now, maybe it's an engineering problem back on the previous project.
Yeah, but, so, so we've got two cut, two, so you've got a keep, 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 keep.
Cut.
Cut. Three, three. Cut it. Public Works equi, oh, the wash facility, we've already done that one.
Strikes again.
Strikes again, okay, six to nothing.
Jan strikes again.
Yep, strikes again, I got that one already. Lewiston Scada Treatment Program, uh, that's, I think, we probably...
The fire scada?
That is the control system for the water system, so basically controlling the pumps and all of that.
Okay, I, I saw that kind of resembled something with the fire department, that's why.
Okay. Roger.
Keep.
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 Keep it.
Keep it, six to nothing. All right, Distribution Water Main Replacement and Rehabilitation. Roger.
Keep.
Keep.
Michael.
That's tied to the streets, I think.
Yeah.
Keep.
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 Keep, six to nothing. Equipment Replacement Program, thought ninety thousand, I think that was a pickup as well.
Yeah, I, I did find it earlier, it was, um...
It's a half-ton pickup and a Chevy.
Yeah, something like that.
Right.
Yeah. Roger.
Cut.
Keep.
Cut.
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 Cut, so that's two keep and four cut. Lewson Auburn Water Treatment Program.
Keep.
Can we go, just go back to the previous one? I, I thought I only heard, uh, one keep.
Okay.
I kept.
You kept?
And everybody else cut.
Okay, so that's one to five, sorry.
We're almost there.
Yeah, all right. Water Treatment Program, do it, how does everybody feel about having safe drinking water? Roger.
Keep.
It still tastes like...
Mark.
It still...
Michael.
It still tastes like crap, but I'll say keep.
Keep.
Keep it.
Six to nothing. Meter Replacement Program, that's part of the water, we did it up here, where the heck are you? That was a six to nothing. Keep. Water pump stations, Roger.
Keep.
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 Uh, Amy.
Keep.
Pump it up, keep them.
Keep them, six to nothing, and the redundant water transmission main installation that they've already started, and that the old one is, was built in eighteen ninety-nine.
But if it's redundant, why would we want it?
Okay, Roger.
Keep.
Keep.
Michael.
I'm just looking at them out and I'm going to say cut.
You're going to say cut?
I'm going to say cut.
Okay, sure, keep.
And done.
Keep it.
Okay, so we've got keep, five to one.
And that one probably has to go out to the voters anyway?
Huh?
That one has to go out to the voters anyway?
Oh, no, that's already in the process, it's already being done now.
Oh, so it's, uh, so much a year?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Well, it's because they, the, the reason it's so expensive is because they've got to go...
Well, they're doing eleven...
Brussels, yeah.
That, that's this year, or is that this?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
This is just twenty-five.
Yes, it's, it's because they've got to go up Center Street and, and they've got to do all the work at night because it's Center Street.
And that one is budget front-heavy from what I remember because of that, so like...
Yeah, because of that, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so you have, and I've got mine, so if you have any questions on, on, you missed the number.
Okay.
Give me a buzz.
So what we'll do, since we have to get this done tomorrow, um, is we'll probably send you a list, Lucy, for you to verify with your numbers at some point.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, and then if there was a three, three, we're just going to, how, how would the board like this? Do you want us to transmit to the council, um, the, the votes on everything and whether to keep or cut, or just a list of things to cut, or a list of things to keep?
I, go ahead.
I would propose that we send both a list of the numbers, but then the, like, you know, the high-level summary is, this is the things we really care about, and rank them in order of how, how many votes that were tallied in favor of them, so, you know, go from, you know, six to nothing.
Yeah, you're making it complicated. They, staff is, is short-staffed, so...
Okay, just send them a list of the numbers then.
I would send them the, the numbers, yeah.
Yeah, just send them a list of the numbers and let them do with it as they please, they're going to anyway, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're, that's done, so does anybody want to volunteer to be on this forestry board? Nobody wants to volunteer to be on the forestry board. Okay, well, the forestry board is going to be, it, bear, you know, short one person because...
We'll wait until we have our full membership back.
Well, yeah, but...
Can I just come back to LCIP? Are there any comments you want to include with this tally? It's fine if you just want to send a tally, just asking.
Just send Michael.
Yeah.
I, I would like to give you a copy if I can find it. I just had, I read from it.
Oh, your comments?
My comments on it, because I'm sure that when you count those up, whether you count up just the ones that are, are having margin of victory, or if you include the ones that are tied, you're going to get an amount that well exceeds the eighty percent...
Oh, heck, yeah, sure.
Uh, and that, that's why I was paying attention to some of the price tags is, uh, there, there's just no way that we can do all of this, uh, and, and if they do try, they're going to do the city much damage if they go from thirty mil to something much greater than where it is already.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, that will be an individual comment and there's no collective comment from the board?
Right, oh, there it is, he's got, he's got it right there, so he can give you, give it to you, so you can include it. Okay, so we're just going to leave the forestry board, forestry.
Uh, let me talk to you about it after the meeting.
Okay, uh, all right, reading a motion to adopt the minutes of the January twenty-second, me, uh, minutes as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I just point out that that's a public hearing, so could you open a public hearing on the LCIP?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. It, I will open up the, for comments for the public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak, you, I'm not going to time you, I put my phone away. Go ahead.
I can keep time.
Just, just put your, uh, give us your name and...
Yeah, Elizabeth Themes, and I'm a school committee representative for Ward Three.
Oh.
And so I was concerned that every single school option was voted down. I will, we're having a meeting tomorrow night with the city council, and so I will probably mention that. Um, I am a little concerned that the city council at least think about our kids.
Thanks.
Okay. All righty, anyone else wish to speak in favor or against? I will close the public hearing, and we need to have a vote. Uh, I need to have a, do we need to have a motion? Okay, we need a, I need a motion.
Need to make a motion to adopt the January twenty-second, twenty-fourth?
No, I mean, uh, for the LCIP.
Oh.
For, for the recommendations that we have, we have...
Make a motion that we submit to the city council the recommendations that he ordered made.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and in that case, Roger?
Make a motion to adopt the January...
No, no, you, we have to vote on this, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Get out of here.
I know, it's time to leave, yes, I know.
Yes.
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 Yes, Ma, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Amy? Yes. Alex?
Yes.
Lucy, yes, okay, now you can do that.
Who seconded that, please?
I did.
Yeah, Amy, Amy did, yeah.
Make a motion to adopt the January twenty-second, twenty-fourth draft.
Minutes as amended. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, yeah, Michael.
I just want to make sure, because I, I saw an email that my concerns were addressed, but I didn't get to print that out. Does that mean that the, uh, under, uh, item two, election of officers, it's now says, uh... Yeah, okay. Five to, okay.
Okay. Uh, all right, yes or no?
Aye.
Uh, do you accept, do you vote for accepting the minutes as amended?
Uh-oh, I didn't realize we were going through those.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes, okay.
Sorry, who seconded those again?
I'm sorry?
Who seconded that? Was it Amy again? Okay.
No, I, I seconded.
Oh, you seconded this one? Okay, sorry. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Unless there are other things to talk about, so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Michelle, what's happening with, uh, uh...
Sorry.
No, no, sorry.
I'm sorry, what? I don't know what you're referring to.
All right, good night, everyone. Thanks, Lucy. We'll see you in two weeks, if there's anything on that agenda, not, four weeks.